Scott Pet Products is your local expert on developing, producing, and distributing top-quality pet products. We are currently seeking motivated individuals to join our team. Benefits include insurance after 90 days, PTO, 401(k), four-day work week, discounts on products, opportunities for advancement, and so much more. Interested applicants may apply online at scottpet.com or by visiting our Rockville location to fill out a paper application. We look forward to hearing from you.
Are you ready, Sandy?
You want me to jump in?
I do.
Okay. I'm just gonna pass around the proposal that we used for Rose Holman in the past when they selected one of their senior projects. So I know they've asked you guys for ideas, maybe as a Rose Holman engineering student senior project. And asked for your thoughts on that. So what they're looking for would be projects either by individuals, communities, charities, municipalities, agencies, so forth. So they're looking for those, what they call back burner projects, that may be something that you want to do but haven't had a chance to really get the full plan out there. That's the types of things that these students want to tackle. It might work to be challenging. So the paper I just passed out is the template that I used when I put mine together for the site development on County Line Road. And you can see at the bottom what those deliverables were, and that's a lot of the things that they look at, is where they expected to present to you at the end. I did find out today, there was a community that mentioned Splash Pad, and that's not necessarily a good fit for the senior project because it's pretty much a canned, here's the design, you put it here, there's really not a lot of work, engineering side behind that, so I'd suggest not putting that in there. But if you do need help with it, they said they have a freshman class that they'd like to do those types of projects with. That could maybe be like in March. That class could start something like that. So if you have some maybe that aren't a good fit for this, I think there's still opportunities to work with these students and do progress. So I told Dave that I would be more than happy to, if you want me to take down your ideas and have an understanding of what perhaps you have to give them to look at, if anything, and then what you expect at the end, because that's the big part, is the deliverable conversation. Either if you can send it to me via email, or if you want to tell me your thoughts, you can take those down. Or if you decide collectively, like, you know, if there's two, two or three things that you would like to put in your request.
I mean, the only thing I'm looking at is obviously the Jacks building. You know, building a parking lot, possibly, you know, some kind of green space.
Charging stations? Like a car?
Charging stations. That's about all I've got for that.
How about the alley, or the post office alley drop-off box, I'm thinking of that. Yeah.
I mean, if there was an idea like a full drainage need from here to Anderson, that might be more challenging versus just a section down the street.
Well, how about the Rockville Road drainage? That's a huge problem.
I have pictures. I have a picture that's pretty drainage-related. That would be my backyard. There should be a aisle right over here, but it's smashed, and you can actually see how bad that, that's my neighbor's whole backyard. There's the water running down my alley outside my yard. And there's drains all the way down that area if we're gonna do that. Sorry.
Where at?
I live over on Barton Leatherwood Alley.
Oh, good.
I live like the next block over from the park, and it's so bad that it literally Here.
They wanted the latest early August, no, early August meetings. I was hoping it might end in this week. He didn't send me the key, but we talked about the pool house.
And there is a drainage in the alley on the other side, but it can be called the grand. I was like, I don't know about getting any of this.
What if we dump that?
And then dump this, so.
So Dave, do you guys want to decide tonight on maybe a top two or three to suggest?
Well, I think the parking lot and depot separately.
I'd agree with that. I mean, we want to make, do you want a motion on this, or?
No, I mean, just whatever you want me to put in the plan, because I don't want to flood it with eight things and then go like.
No, I don't know, do what you think, listen.
I agree.
Although we outside the pool, it looks like.
What about pool house?
Since it's free, we sit here and free, I mean, we've got three sites, but maybe we have some that we already use. It's kind of like in the works that we're already paying. Really utilize it, maybe for something that we haven't touched on, or haven't implemented in the first project.
Because if we do the parking lot and the depot, I mean, we can phase it as some type of community space.
Do the two, those two, I'm actually going to break those parking lots.
What would be the parking area you're talking about, the depot?
You know what?
The park, you should set up a parking lot for the depot.
No, not for the depot, as a separate parking lot.
Oh, well, you're making something about depot, that's what I was.
Just, just some different designs, make couple usable spaces along those ways.
That, you're using the depot area for the parking market, okay. Make a better parking lot, is what you're saying.
Well, yeah, just add some things.
Yeah, okay.
You good?
We're good.
Specific deliverables, will you send me something that just tells me what you hope to have at the end? So if it's a report that includes X, Y, and Z, you know, if it's a drawing, if it's whatever it is that you want to see at the end of this for those two things. Okay?
Thank you. John, I'm gonna let you go, I want to make a statement first. I've got a, I got a list of your questions here.
Okay, that's, I repeat this, Dave.
Well, the first thing I want to tell you is, this parking meter thing is not, there's nothing to it. It was discussed, it was brought up at a board meeting. I mean, we discussed it for a couple minutes, nothing's been done with it, no, no votes have been, nothing's been done with it.
There's no sense in even getting into the questions already, mate. All that I want to do was this. I'm here prepared from there, from Yonkers, and everybody's making a big deal out of it.
Well, you need to come here every Tuesday, or every month, second and fourth Tuesday of the month, and you'll find out what we're doing.
Right. I didn't know anything about it until I started here, so I'm not gonna listen to these guys, I'm gonna go myself, keep my mouth shut, listen to what it is, and so what you're saying makes sense, and I don't have anything to say other than, yeah.
Well, there's a couple other things I want to address, though.
Okay.
You sent me something personally.
Yeah.
And I want to tell you that you were talking about us paving streets, and we, in the last two years, not including this year, we have paved 45 roads in Rockville.
Right, yeah.
Now, some were full and some were partials. We've replaced 130 feet of side, millennial feet of sidewalk, we're planning on replacing another 110 this year. And I don't know exactly what we've got on the schedule for road paving this year, but nine. Nine, nine more roads this year. How many poles have we replaced?
Our department's done 13, and I think them has done 20 this year.
So, I mean, we are doing constructive things with our.
I'm not saying you're not, and in fact, I know when I've talked with a couple guys since, they've been on, yeah, Voorhees Street and Pure Plain, and I think over on Jackson, surveying, or whatever you want to call those guys, he kind of explained to me something about the water flow, that's what they do, blah, 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 blah. So I understand as a procedure, it's something that's gonna take a little time.
Well, we're doing, we're doing a study, basically, engineering for the drainage on those three roads.
Right.
So, I mean, you just gotta be patient with us, and we're doing the best we can with what we got, and.
I think, I think the only thing, this is all, got every, all cards on the table, the thing that has ticked me off about this whole deal is, number one, and I know it was a total different board meeting, first that's tied, several years ago, that promised us a street. A year after, they put half of ours in, never did happen, worked off 15 years ago. And I've got two, several different stories, actually, why they worked that, some of them, I understand, just what you just said about the survey, trying to get new pipes and stuff in, and plate them up, replace them, so on, so forth. But the other thing that was told to me, and I can't remember who it was, was, we don't want to put in this new street, have something pop up, have to dig it out. But I've seen, I know one for sure, over there, Dr. Gambiani, lived, I can't figure the name of the street, new street was put down, they've already.
Yeah, we've had, we've had.
For how long, even what it was.
Well, we've had a couple water leaks pop up, and, you know, we can, obviously, have the control over that.
And, and, well, what I'm getting at was, you've put all the good pipes up, and some still come up, and you're gonna have to dig, and that's just the way it is.
Well, there's gonna be, the problem with your area, obviously, there's gonna be a couple projects probably coming up, one's gonna be a gas project, and one will be the drainage. So there's no, there's no point in us doing anything and then turning around and tearing it out and costing us coins, so. I mean, like I said, just, you know, try to be patient with us, and, you know, we're doing the best we can.
I've been as patient as I could, I'd just like to see a new street before I die.
I hope you get that, but you're trying, so. But, I mean, do you have anything else you want to address while you got the floor, so?
Well, the meter thing, I think we talked.
The meter thing is not, not even a thing, it really is.
And that's all, that's all I need, no, I, I was hearing from too many people, and nobody knew what the hell they've talked about, I finally come up with, so I just get it straight from the horse's mouth, and that's why I'm here.
When we start discussing it, if it becomes a discussion, the merchants around the square will be notified, and I'm sure they'll be here, we'll have public hearings on them, so, I mean, it's not.
Okay. Well, again, that's why I'm here, to get it straight from you guys' mouth.
Well, I'm glad you're here.
Listen to everybody else. So, and what's, what's happening about it is, you're getting too much people talking out, and then they're getting all soft about it.
I can't control that.
Not even, like you said, knowing what they're talking about.
Well, like I said, you can come here, and you'll find out what we're doing.
Park Without Reverse also broadcasts all these meetings, so you could watch the.
Where at?
ParkWithoutReverse.org.
So they're all broadcast online, so you can see what occurs at the meetings, and then you can see for yourself, and you don't have to rely on necessarily the papers version of it, although they're accurate usually, so.
Well, I wasn't gonna be able to make it today, I didn't make the doctor's appointment, but it just, we got that early.
I was just saying, some people, you know, want to see it versus read it.
Read it.
You can read it or see it, because you have the papers, you know, report, and then you also can see it online.
Sure.
So the gossip around town is, you know, what it is, but you can see it with your own two eyes if you can't be here.
No, I know you guys have done a lot, a lot, a lot of streets all over the, several other projects and all, but I guess this comes down right to, again, from what I was promised away several years ago, never happened, and seeing all these streets go in, but yet we're still having to drive one, what we've got, and I'm sure you're near, every one of you guys have driven down that street, and know what it looks like, and I'm sure there's probably other streets that's bad, if not maybe a little worse, but.
We've got a plan, we basically have a 10-year plan, and, you know, we're, like I said, we're working on.
Trying to get the plan done before I die.
Let's hope you live a long, happy life, now that's.
Is that a drainage thing?
Now, one other quick play, do you have any, have any of you been down to Big Jackson? Well, it's off of Voorhees Street and back of the homes on the east side, since the Howard Avenue project's been done, as far as the drainage? A hundred percent better.
Oh, good.
It is. I mean, what you've done there on Howard has taken care of, I wouldn't say maybe 100%, I would say 75 to 85% of it, because you still have some, but nothing, nowhere there's like.
Well, good.
And I guess maybe that is the other thing that kind of upset me, was knowing that I would been, we've been told that we gotta wait till they get something done with the drainage, blah, 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 but I've seen a big difference since then, so it's just like, unless something else is going on that we don't, I don't know about, please let's get something done, but. And don't get me wrong, that I, I'm sitting back here, and I just don't know what the hell I'm talking about, I understand what you guys have to go through, so, but I just want you to understand from our viewpoint, too.
Oh, I understand. But, you know, getting on, on Facebook's not, not the best place to get your information, so, at least with a town perspective.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, again, that's why I was here.
Good, well, I'm glad. You got anything else?
No.
Randy, you're up.
Okay. The Police Commission met July 22nd, 6:00 p.m. We've got a few more sessions to follow, they've got scheduled August the 12th at 6:00 p.m., September 16th at 6:00 p.m., and December 9th at 6:00 p.m. And those meetings will continue to be held at the Police Department, where we can review use-of-force cases.
Randy, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you have a look here?
Because all the recording equipment and everything's down there already.
Okay.
It's, it's all, we could copy it all to discs or something, and bring it up here, and set up a projector, and a screen, we did that, right, so it's all.
I, I never, some of that's public meeting time.
Yes, and it's, and it's open to the public?
Well, I just don't know what kind of facilities, you don't have much of my facilities down there, do you?
No, but we got some chairs down there and stuff, if anybody wants to come in, they're welcome to come in.
Okay, well.
I'm gonna start doing the Police Commission.
All right, okay.
I've gotten a few requests for them.
So you got three more meetings scheduled for the year?
Yep, and unless they have.
12/9?
12/9, yeah.
Other issues pop up, they can have another meeting if needed. Officer Martin is scheduled to attend free training in Fort Wayne, hosted by the U.S. Attorney's Office next month, we're just paying for the motel and for the amount of training funds. The, I put feelers out, see if anybody else wanted to attend with him, since we already had the room paid for, and nobody's jumped at the opportunity. Monthly statistics are still not available, but I did print out a summary of all calls for you, they're on the, on the table there somewhere for you to pass around.
I'll go.
Officers will begin working extra patrol when school starts back next week to follow school buses on pickup and drop-off routes, that's part of the Start Law and Violation Enforcement Grant from Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, so that'll be before school and after school. And then Blitz 110, the Drive Sober Get Pulled Over, starts August 18th through September 6th, so that officers will be working a lot of overtime traffic for, traffic safety for last Blitz of the fiscal year. Next year's Operation Pullover, or CHIRP, grant will be a Traffic Safety Partnership Grant with Clinton Police Department, they will be administering the grant. But the fact that they partnered with two departments, the state felt like they, they didn't want to do it unless we did the partnership, so, but now that we've done it, they'll probably give us additional monies for those purposes. It also results in additional equipment, such as Officer Martin just finished DRE school, got two other officers that are, are planning on attending those three trainings by the state, and I think right now we've got Chris Fisher and possibly Ian Redman attending those later classes, but they're ongoing training going all the time. Officer Martin just had, called out to conduct a drug recognition evaluation on a suspected driver, wasn't under the influence of alcohol, and it didn't result in an arrest for driving under the influence of marijuana. They also obtained marijuana from the vehicle. Had the meeting with the North Central Park School Superintendent a week or so ago, and I sent you information on that, the, he has since, sent a new memorandum of understanding, which I gave to the town's attorneys for review for you before the meeting. They added one, one additional agreement to the thing, which really is not, it's already there, but it, that the officers will spend all their time in one or other of the buildings, including lunch, unless needed somewhere else in an emergency. So officers will go out, either bring their lunch, or go out and get their lunch and bring it back to the buildings. So they agreed to the extra amounts.
Was it 41?
It said not exceed 40, is what it said. 222, 222 per day, not exceed 40,000 per 180 days per year.
But he was gonna follow up with us, a meeting with him this week, too, on Tuesday or Wednesday, and he hasn't given me a time yet, but I don't know if that's the right, maybe they split that, did they split it partially?
Well, so what I read previously sounded like, or actually, I listened to the school board meeting, I think, because I was wanting to hear that, it sounded like they were voting to split it, but I haven't done the math on 222.22 per day times 180 days, but.
So it's $22 and something extra a day. So it's still.
He, he did indicate in talking with us that some of their funding comes through a grant through the state, and that next year he'd be open to the idea of applying for a greater amount of funds for that drainage.
Yes.
So that, that was promising, and it may make it so the whole amount is.
It's covered by the grant.
Let me run the math on this one.
So it's still gonna be an expense to the.
22 times 180.
Just less.
It would pay 40, yeah, that comes out to 3999.6, if you do 180 days, I don't know, I think we were at 43 was the number, some reason sticks in my head, so I think that's a halfway, maybe, or something?
It probably is.
I, I think 43 was the expense that, for some reason, I had that the town had.
Or moving in the right direction.
So if you're at 40, you're really looking at expensive 3 instead of whatever it was before that.
And just to remind you, the town does get the added benefit of an additional officer during the day that can leave and respond to emergencies if needed, and it frees up the duty officer from having to respond to school for problems. The insurance company has agreed to repair the wrecked 2016 vehicle, parts are ordered to get it back in service as soon as possible. I obtained photographs of the 2013 vehicle, which was repaired, and sent that to the dealership in Fort Wayne, where we're purchasing the two vehicles, to get a trade-in value on it, I have not received that back from him yet. I tried to call him this afternoon, and I got his voicemail, so I just left him a message. School starts back August the 9th for students, so that'll be a week from today, so I'm still looking for an additional crossing guard. Since one of them, we lost one of them to the school, he's gonna be a bus driver, pays more. About the same kind of hours, maybe a little more, but he still pays more for him, so, but he appreciated, he appreciated the opportunity and thanked the town for the, for the opportunity. Gun permits have been on the rise since they're now free. In the last two weeks, I've done 20 gun permits, yes, in the town. So I guess it takes more time to investigate and follow up now, but now that they're free, everybody.
Well, so this was brought up at a meeting with the state senator and the House Representative member of the state, and they indicated that your new funding that's gonna come through is gonna include dollars that were averaged to attribute for the loss of that revenue. I asked how that comes down, and they didn't have a lot of knowledge as far as where you're gonna see that come in at, but there's supposed to be extra funding coming through the state, and that they tried to make an average of what they thought was the right dollar. Cameron actually asked them some questions on that, too, but is that an accurate portrayal as you saw it?
Yeah. They said the funding was gonna be there, but they didn't really give an answer on whether it was coming from the, from what form it is.
Right, so that might be something to watch, is dollars coming through the state, whatever money they come. They just said they're gonna have increased funding for the loss of the revenue for the gun permits for public safety.
But it may not come as, as a replacement for that, and may, they're gonna send you additional funding, but how you spend it's up to you.
Right, it, it might come as a public safety funding, but it's not gonna say why it was this or that. They didn't have very much information as to that, when asked, pointed questions on it, as to, you know, how would we see that come through, is it coming at a county level or a town level? They did indicate they thought it was coming out of town level, but, you know, they didn't really say, watch for this funding, so that's just something we'll want to watch for as funding comes in for the calendar year, have we seen a bump in something, because supposedly it's going up.
We talked about some of those additional funding possibilities, is that something the Police Commission would adopt, or is that something council?
Additional funding.
Like, the incoming vehicles?
That's something that you guys would adopt.
The board.
Not the mayor board, but town board. Well, and that's something Randy had asked me to put some things together on, but I'd been out of town, I'm back, I saw something on that, but.
He was lovely, he was on the beach.
Took a vacation, yes.
So we'll need to. So we'll need to adjust that in the budget, designate some money for ammunition equipment that we haven't had in the budget before, because the, we had it, but it was, the funding source came from firearms permits, and now we don't get that.
So I guess my suggestion would be we just watch as our funding comes in and see where that increase came in, unless there's some.
They're not seeing whether they're going to separate that in any way, or is it gonna be public safety split? And you don't know there's.
They had very limited information on it. They were just touting that they had addressed that, because they were asked specifically, if we've lost the funding for the firearms, what do you suggest we do about that? And they said that they did calculate that in when they made that decision and that they're sending additional funding.
That could be hard.
And I, I think I actually was the one to ask them.
I'm gonna answer any question that way.
What is that fund that is coming in as? Where should I tell the town to look for it at? They didn't have that info, so. So I, I don't know who would have that if, you know, maybe through your clerk treasurer contacts, you might be able, you and your people find some funding for us?
Additionally, I, I don't anticipate ammunition costing as much as it did this year either. Because of COVID and the factory shutdown, that the prices shot up on us this year. But luckily we had money in there to buy it. We went ahead and bought enough for now. And that should last us for a while. We were concerned about not being able to get it. And so I was trying to order for the next year, and our supplier had it in stock, so he sent it all at one time, but you got, we've already paid for it now. So we should be good. That's all I got.
One other thing.
Yes, sir.
What's a roof situation?
He's getting it into his schedule. He hasn't given me a start date yet.
So Randy, another thing, I saw that they changed the law of the cell phone use. Now they actually take points off your license. You can't have so, more than so many in two years. Do you guys do any stops for people on there?
We do. Distracted driving is part of, part of the traffic enforcement now, and it's been part of that Operation Pullover, CHIRP funding that we've done, that we've specifically targeted distracted driving. I don't have statistics with me on how much, how much we've done, but for this last year, it's been mostly an educational period, where we'd stop people and said, it's against the law, knock it off. A lot of accidents are caused by distracted driving, so. But the actual enforcement of it now is gonna start coming more into play.
Well, back to Dave's thing on that roof, I mean, I tried to get a date from this contractor if I were you. The time down, I hate to get into bad weather. We've got maybe.
Couple months.
A couple of months.
Yep. I will do that advert for you. I'll send it to you as soon as I get the information.
Alrighty, thank you.
I appreciate you letting me go first. I do have another meeting to attend to, so I'll be leaving in about half an hour.
Got it. Anybody else got anything ready? Jeff?
A few things. Water department was up with utilities supply picking up parts and it's gotten impromptu thing. And Cody kinda asked me shorthanded if he could have approval for getting some stuff while I was there. I don't like doing that. He came out with about forty-five hundred bucks worth of stuff. Restocked his supplies. And just need approval, just let you guys know, that's all we did.
Well, right, not right on track. Forty-one percent for what we ought to be in July. Got thirty-nine and a half percent left in supply, so. He's gonna have some money left.
He's scheduled to pay.
Yeah. Can you, can you vote?
Please.
Tell me.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, just for your information, I've advertised for one part-time and a full-time employee.
So, yeah, I know you brought those up. Now, full-time, they're replacing some of them?
Yes.
In the pan, right? Right. And the part-time person? Exactly. Did we ever get more to begin with?
I've got four, but the, the three are college students in their, their last days, like the, not next week, the week after now. I think I've got until the twelfth.
Good luck.
Yep. Request for days off. Like a request on August 12th to 13th, going down to Bloomington with my wife and son. And also nine, September 28th, 24th, that week. Like to take on at Colorado Springs for thirtieth wedding anniversary.
Wow. Well, congratulations.
Thank you. I don't see a problem with it.
Sounds okay to me.
Thank you. Just an update, still waiting on you, Mac. Give me some information on our water extensions. I know they're booked up crazy busy, so.
What are you extending to?
Well, we, we talked about going out for the L A P. We wanted to get kind of an estimate of what that was gonna be. Then we had a request down on South Bridge Road, going out about four or five hundred feet down there.
When I like be, that a four-inch line?
It would probably have to be six, in my thinking. So it's, it's pretty substantial.
Well, makes sense, we don't wanna go any further. You don't wanna. What do we actively have these, is that a plus size, six inch?
Uh, I think it depends. I think down on South Bridge Road, Cody said that down toward the end where that fire hydrant is, it's only two inch. So he, he's concerned about if we go that way, will we have enough pressure to feed those two houses and anybody else that wants to come on through? So that's gonna be an issue. He knows that that flush hydrant there at the end just typically has a little pressure in there, so. Those are things we'll wanna, wanna look into before we make a decision on it. Just also for your information, storm warning Tuesday for repairs on that storm drain on South Market. I'll have three boats for a storm board. I'll take that to them, so we can get that probably fixed and repaired. And also an update on Jackson Jax building. So just so you know, there are still some materials in there that need to come out.
Well, who loses materials?
It's the hazmat, like the old cleaning supplies and things like that. It's part of this brownfields program that went in. They took out the hydraulic lift.
Right.
Now they found some other materials in there that needed to come out. A lot of these old cleaning supplies, when I looked at the manifest, I don't know that kind of stuff, so. SES has the manifest and all the stuff they need from us. They're coming to get that out of there. Once that's done, I think we're at the point where we can go ahead and schedule a asbestos.
We don't think we can schedule one before that?
I think we need to have Brownfield close out their stuff officially before you do that. Would be my suggestion.
Hasn't it's any timeframe?
Uh, I think it's, don't quote me on this, but I think it's next week. For the kind of stuff.
So you work with Roger, he's a, you know, company of Paul for asbestos?
Yeah, Roger has somebody that he can send to us. I'll try to get maybe a couple names so we can get some potential prices when it comes down, we have to do the inspection.
So once that's done, Roger will be ready to go on the bench back, so, right?
Yes, once that's done, once that's done, and we get the asbestos report back, that'll kinda tell us what else we need to do. And at that point, Roger can include in the bench specs and the asbestos work and totally tear it in the building. Now, you guys just want the estimate on the building itself? We don't wanna do the paving or not the gravel, just to tear down the building.
Tear it down and backfill to specs sufficient to fill the lot, I guess.
Yep.
Well, that'll, that'll. We got it right now, it's just filling all the main insurance. No free left to cause a problem.
Yep.
We have the money.
And those are kinda my things that I have for you tonight. You guys have any questions for me? Just shoot.
Oh, well.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
The paving or are we crossing paving? Any idea when they might be back?
Eight eleven.
Eight eleven, they, they said.
That's what, of course, this is about the third or fourth time that they give me a date and things have happened weather-wise and that kind of stuff, so.
Okay, good.
What you need, Dom?
Back to you, the parking lot of Jackson Jax. I know you said with all the hazmat, blah, blah, all this, has to be taken care of, which is understandable. Was there any kind of after that setup, paint, to tear it down and start the project?
No, we, we haven't got to that yet.
Just to lighten the game.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta get it all cleaned up and everything like that. And once we get all that stuff done, then I can have our engineers say, alright, these are the specifications that we want to demolish this building. We can advertise and get a look in on that.
Well, yeah.
Dom, the removal of the hazardous materials funded by the state, and to do that, we have to follow their timeline and all the details. And that's why I was talking to them about as far as we have to have them close their, their process on that before we can proceed with our process. So we're kinda at the mercy of this brownfield program through the state. That's the same program that was used out of Leon and Bryant to kinda fund cleaning up those buildings too, so.
Has it gotten to any extent that you guys talk about? I know it's gonna be, or you said parking lot, but I'm assuming for the whole public? So make a park, go around town, do what they need to? Or is it a specific type of parking for certain people?
I don't think we've really designated as anything limiting anything at this point. The, the main goal was to get a blighted property torn down. And that way we could keep the community.
Totally agree on that, last ten, fifteen.
And parking's been an issue, so a parking lot kinda makes sense. It sounds more somewhat, but we're not obligated in any manner whatsoever to use it as a parking lot unless we choose to. That's just kinda been what's been identified as a need.
In a perfect world, employees that worked around the square could probably.
And I totally agree with you, absolutely. Courthouse, you can wrap all the messes.
Yep.
So it, it's not, I guess, designated or limited in any way at this point.
Okay.
Ready, Randy?
I am. Before I start on that, Troy did call me today and some people apologized to make it, he is going to.
Thanks, oh, sorry. See you, Dom.
He is going to bring, at the next meeting, hopefully have some quotes. There are no alarms there at the sewer plant. And when he turned his, that storm blew out some stuff at the sewer plant, it caused some issues down there, so he's gonna try to get some quotes on alarm. We don't have alarms on it like we do on the.
Lift stations.
Lift stations and stuff, so. He said that was one thing, he wanted to try to get some pricing on.
Who's willing to replace bill?
Um, Scott, uh, yeah, he came to the meeting and said. But, yeah, I, I think he's worked with them, or he's got about ten or twelve years. But that's who's doing that. Okay, so I have claims, the first batch of claims for ninety-five, three twenty, ninety-seven two are the payroll claims that went on the last report that, so I deducted that amount off of there. So I have that one, and then I have my regular claims for four ninety-three, two fourteen twenty-three.
Any questions?
No, looks pretty good. I move.
All favor?
Aye.
The next one, I heard this in here because we are having a meeting, and if you want some more information, I can kinda reach back out to folk on that, but you do have to turn in a certified salary. You may have some more information on this, if you knew any of that background. On the seventy-seven fund. Currently and in the past, when they established that, that was the end of eighteen when that was being established, they certified that salary at thirty-two thousand. That is being your highest non-promoted salary of a first-class officer for your calendar year. That can be whatever the board sets that out, because that seventy-seven percentage is based off of, it's not based off of what they're making individually, it's based on what your certified salary is. So it's the same for everybody involved at a designated salary. So your retirement benefit is not based on the wages that you're actually making in seventy-seven.
What's the dollar design?
I didn't know if.
Why would they do that?
I wasn't around for any of that. So any information you have on it, if you forward it to me, I'd, I'd appreciate it so I could read up on it.
I didn't either.
Why would they have a retirement plan and not have it based on an actual salary?
They're just giving a, a straight benefit out of a set number to every single officer for arbitrarily.
The board can set that at any amount they desire.
That's why I said I'd like to read some of that.
So theoretically, the board can set that, you know, seventy-five thousand. I mean, this, this is kinda wild.
It just seems like an arbitrary way to do it though, because you're not rewarding based upon accomplishment and things like that.
The user service there, they provide, it's very.
I mean, I don't know.
It's your regular retirement, you're not either.
Right, if anything, you send me on that, it'd be appreciated, because I, I don't have anything on it.
Okay, let's.
Well, it's all kinda, I mean, I can get you some more. I don't know if you're looking to make that change at all, or if you want me to send you all some information and then make that decision.
Well, we should look at, I'm gonna look at, see. Yeah, I definitely need to review it. What was the amount it's based on now?
Thirty-two.
It's thirty-two, and that's what it's been ever since that fund was established. And that was the end of two thousand eighteen.
Do you happen to have anything that established that fund at the time? Because I don't have any of those documents either.
Mike's looking to see if he has any kind of electronic copy of the original.
Okay. Yeah, if you forward that to me, that'd be helpful, because.
He, he's not sure.
Nothing was left in this office, so. I know that's been some years ago.
Yeah, I can.
But I, I don't have anything as to the retirement fund at all, so.
Well, I can, I'm waiting on a call back from them as well. So I'll try to get you as much information as I can about that.
That'd be okay.
So that's a link to this, of our clothing for a few of the guys that's required to wear that material. And it appears that Semtoss has a pretty good program. I think that you brought that up, or you knew a little bit of background, somebody that you utilize that. So I listed that there. Basically, it's thirty-five sixty-seven, which means your thirty-five dollar a week negotiated contract. And the state offers government quite a discount on those items. So I think, did you all get an email for overall what that cost was? I don't see it on this one, but I think Mandy put that together as far as the items, eleven articles for each, you know, full-time person and some for the part-time person. Is that total to you? Eighteen fifty-four. Okay.
Eighteen fifty-four? Four thousand there, anything more?
That's a, I mean, that's a rental that's entering a thirty-six month contract.
That's based on a quote that we buy somewhere else or anywhere.
No, it's there. They bring, they bring in.
They launder it.
Her piece, we would get charged a fee. And then they, it's a weekly pickup and drop off, and they do all the washing. I just thought that costs versus what was presented last time for material that you don't know if they're washing that, because the guy that said you have to like clean your stuff out if you're a washer, you use anything.
Right, yeah, yeah.
If you have other household members.
Well, it certainly increases your confidence in safety of both. And it seems cheaper. Here's a big.
Well, it's like you said, I mean, unless you're dry cleaning that far, it's not gonna last. It just, I mean. I'll be in a corner.
Well, right, and I do remember the last time we, do you have documentation of the last time that clothing was purchased? Has it been from the last two years? Yes, twice, once, two. Okay, so. That's why I thought a quoted was forty-five hundred dollars, seemed like an awful lot compared to this when in a year's time, or, you know, we're gonna have the same routine as my stepson.
So, so I have read all the through this, but, but did they ensure that the clothing wore out and that he replaced it?
Yep, it's all replace if they get a tear in something, it does replace something.
We should get that from a four-year-old.
I know, I would like that.
We're gonna make a motion on it.
Well, I'm not too.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All favor?
Aye.
What's your motion? What's your motion?
I don't know, some thoughts?
Thirty-six month agreement.
Can we say pending review of contract?
Yep.
Good point.
Absolutely. And there is, I mean, it's pretty, it's already established.
Well, it might be a terrible contract.
Well, I was just saying, yeah.
Because it's a governmental contract.
No!
And we already have a contract with Semtoss.
I know they're not gonna negotiate, your point's taken on that. I'm just saying that that's not always in your best interest necessarily.
Right.
And probably won't raise for three years.
Yeah, about, well, about thirty-six months, I think. And then... And I can send you all of the information, because there was a ton of emails that Semtoss had sent to us. So I can send that to you.
I'm not saying it's a bad contract, it probably is a perfectly fine contract, I'd just like to read this.
Sure.
You don't have that to do with it.
Well, yeah, I'm kinda, if you sign a contract as a terrible contract, that's my fault, so.
Right. You're doing your big diligence. All your fault, yes.
And they will come and do all, they'll bring stuff, they'll bring clothing items, different choices and stuff for them, so. Once you review that and if that's fine, then let me know, and I'll, we'll get back to them.
Well, I mean, they're gonna have an actual contract they're gonna send you, is what I...
Well, right, yeah.
Do they have shoes to?
Oh, yeah, they do. The only, oh, I didn't get my credit card square out fees. Thirty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents on a pool square credit card fee for July.
Want a motion on that?
Who?
Please, second.
All in favor?
That came in to be late, so. And then the other thing, we just had to do a little correction of pool water ordinance, just to make clear that that rate is going from point zero zero three seven five per gallon to point zero one per gallon. So I think there was just some mismutation, and, you know, you heard something wrong, I heard something wrong, you know, whatever the case may be. So I wanna clarify that too, because I've reached out to the paper as well, and when I talked to you, it was just a better idea to bring that back.
Yeah, I would just mark it as the same ordinance number and just put A next to it, because it's amended.
Okay. Well, I didn't have the paper run that yet, and I talked to Abby and I talked to Lisa as well, and so I'll get everything signed with the correct numbers on here. I can even, I'll be sending that to the paper as well. So do you want me just to use the approval that you sent from the last meeting? I just need that one signed.
It's just amended because of the...
So I...
We need a motion to accept an amendment?
It's point zero zero three seven five. To point zero one.
Yes, yep, you got it. So you said just on an amendment?
I just put the same ordinance number, resolution number, and then put an A next to it for a...
Because I never, I mean, we approved that one with the correct rate set, it's just a communication issue there. I've already, I have the other one signed, so.
Right, it was just a typo in the actual language, so that's why we can do it.
Okay.
Because what we actually talked about was what this was.
Yes.
Whereas the right...
Before I move on, where are we at? I think you guys were working on the resolutions, sorry, to move the market, the South market.
Aren't those done? Didn't we already do those?
Well...
We did those about a month ago, I think.
I thought we were finished up on them.
We moved it from...
Well, yeah, we went ahead and...
We moved it from Howard to the, moved it from Howard to General, then General to South Market, is what we had to do. My understanding is they're done, though.
All of your stuff is done. I think maybe I haven't internally been the first, because I did all of the other ones at one time.
Because I could've swore we did that in the meeting about a month ago.
Well, I thought so.
Let me make a note for myself, because that was one, it was one Howard to General.
Agreed.
Yeah, well, good. One more thing off the list. Is that all you've got?
That's all I have, once they've done something, I'll do my stuff.
No, I don't. I'm good for the rest of the year, actually.
We could do that.
I do. The mystery of the snowflake banners.
Yes.
We left them up because we ran out.
Oh.
That's a little better.
I forgot, just leave them there, huh?
Yes. Looks much better.
That's like a white snowflake.
I'm not anti-snow at all.
I can't, anybody actually noticed.
Just wait.
We wanted to see they would notice that.
I know.
That was a thing.
Yeah, whenever you...
That's the laws in the town council.
Roseville.
Roseville, Roseville.
Thank you, Roseville Town Council for your vigilance.
What brought the conversation up, just by the way, was me trying to sell those banners.
Marshall's gonna reach out to you.
Roseville buying too. I sold two.
Look good.
Just had a lot of positive interest.
Okay, I have a couple of those. So we got a payment from one of our small claims accounts that I'm gonna be getting a check from the town from my trust account. Also, reset it for a corporate number twenty-third. The outstanding balance should be paid by that date by agreement, but they did come to my office and make a payment that day in good faith. So we, they owe us like three hundred dollars now, though. It wasn't one of our big accounts, but they did pay some of it. The other one didn't show up, and we didn't have service, the search continues for them. Ordinance violations, we have two of them correct, they're violations, so I'm gonna be dismissing those. One of them was on North Erie, they mowed the yard, it's owned by a realty company, they're trying to sell it, but they did mow the front yard area, which is what we can, of course, inside the fence, there's not much I can do about, so. If you recall, that's the one that is dilapidated and has been for a while, is owned by a bank, not a private individual. They haven't foreclosed their loan on it, so I can't do anything to them personally. Another two we're going back to court on, they've been previous violators, we're going back to court and asking for fines with your blessing, since they got their chance to correct it and then went right back to being violating. So I've refiled on two of them. And then the most recent one that I reported, I received from Randy at the last meeting, has corrected their property and is trying to settle it, so we're gonna dismiss that violation pending they're violating it, obviously. So some progress, some regression, and I'll issue a check to Brandy for the money we collected on the, one of the two small claims we had. I do have court tomorrow on two more ordinance violations tomorrow afternoon at one-thirty, if anybody's incredibly bored. That's all I have.
All right, got any old business?
That, oh, quick, that four oh four...
Four fourteen? But that's what I'm set tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, so he has the key to that property.
I signed it up already.
Randy has the, they, his own...
Yeah, you and I talked a little bit about that.
I'm sorry, I gave him that and told him he needed to get with you, and since he had that violation, the rest of stuff.
I'll reach out to Randy, that, but it is set tomorrow afternoon. Yeah, that's the one on refi, four fourteen? Yeah. We refiled on that, I just don't have a court date for that now. Yeah, that's the other one that I said was a passive violator that's filed on it.
Okay, on the public safety expense, we saw, there's something sent out, I can get the door, I can print out, did the last two years expenses?
Oh, okay.
About nineteen and twenty? But, yeah, I'd be interested to have something, I don't know what the heck it is, if I cannot get the thing printed out.
I have a written hard copy.
But, you know, more importantly, for this year, we need to take a look at, in the same format, you know, where we've spent our money. Because I know the expenses in there, they're, like radios are in there, probably. Yes, no?
Well, you mean this year's radios? You're looking at it on this year's paper, so it doesn't have anything to do with the last...
Right, but for this year's expenses, we would...
But you'll also see an additional preparation filed before the end of the year, so that's...
Hundred ninety-eight thousand three oh one, but a big portion of that's radio.
Non-recurrent.
Right, that's my point, but the problem is, Borch, look at that, and that kinda segues into, have you met with DLGF and how'd that go?
I just did Thursday, and I've got some information that I'll be forwarding you guys before the next meeting. There is a spreadsheet of our break-based funds that she's had a breakdown of where that comes, so I want you guys all just to see where those numbers come into play. But yeah, on this one, because she's looking at that, looking for fund report too, and seeing this number here, and I explained to her that a hundred and four, a hundred and fifty-six thousand of that is the radius, so I'll be doing additional preparation that will be covering that. So that won't be a negative amount like that.
Well, when you say additional, we're just doing, it's from General, you just gotta put it in there.
I have to file additional preparation through them, I have to get the approval back from them in order to take that money that I received in to the General to get it back to cover.
And that's one reason your funds up so high.
Process.
Now, for all of the board, I guess, just, you know, we're seven months in, where it's forty-one percent is where it should be left in all your expense accounts. We're doing pretty good for the year so far, that's pretty good.
Can you say what's going in?
Well, some three-nine, or, you know, some are over, some are below, forty-one percent is where we need to be, and everything looks pretty good. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. Yeah, I think we really need to look at the year-to-date expenses in our public safety department, police, and just understand where we're at and what we're looking for. This is kinda hard to look at this, can we see that big number? It's because of the radio.
Is state part of the count coming here?
They have not said.
Okay.
They should give heads up, don't they?
They're supposed to maybe, you have a mission over there. They're done with us, they're still...
They have to, we have to prepare the data for the...
Well, whether they're coming in here or they're gonna try, they want a bunch of stuff sent to them, so that they don't have to do onsite, they have a bunch onsite that's up, so that's kinda why.
Well, just cross street.
It's different.
You know, those kids.
And they're trying to get caught up, I mean, you know, by this time, they're gonna go ahead and try to do eighteen, nineteen or something.
Yeah, like a nineteen and twenty.
Well, eighteen wasn't on the last one, so that's why they're catching it in the next couple of years, so.
So is that one, or two, or three?
Yes. So, yeah, I'll let you all know about, and since I get a minute, I'll send the information from Heather's call and from the DLGF on that too.
Okay.
We good? Anything else? You guys have anything you want to talk about?
Yes. I do have a couple things I'd like to talk about. My name's Morse Harvey, I'm hog heaven down here on...
Jefferson.
Jefferson, but anyway, one thing I come in about was the meters that was in the newspaper and stuff, and I'm on Main Street, and we've talked to some of the merchants, and they are definitely against it, just to go on the other grounds, or it's meter going square. Another thing I was thinking about, I talked to Park about it earlier. We have a public safety thing in town where the fire department comes around and inspects our buildings, which is an excellent thing. I come from Keegah originally, I've seen two sites in the town bur down in Keegah, and I lived over in Billgrove for a while, I've seen the fire bill grumber down. They're monitoring these buildings, which is a good thing, but you've got abandoned buildings or empty buildings that nobody's monitored, nobody's inspecting. And if you ever get one of them buildings on fire, you're gonna lose half your block.
Well, so on the square, they have been inspected, if you're talking about the museum, it's been inspected by the building inspector?
How does people mon, how do you monitor that? Like, my building's got fire extinguishers and it's got smoke detectors, but nobody's there.
So the building inspector goes through and monitors them periodically, but we also do it by complaint as well. So for instance, that particular building had some glass falling out onto the street, so at that point, we asked the building inspector to go in and review the building and see whether it violates any building codes or not. And we asked the owners of the building at that point to become compliant with whatever's required under state law. So it's partially complaint-driven, it's partially a scheduled repetitive review from the building inspector.
That's, that was my concern, because what happened, when we lived in Billgrove, was a kid kicked the back door and went in there and smoked cigarettes, threw a cigarette there, and he burnt half the town down, you know, I mean. But you can't prevent that, but if you've got some kind of alarm system, warning system, and they have, they have enough at the moment.
And so part of that's where you're hearing me mention ordinance violations, we're using our nuisance ordinance to kinda regulate that too. Is if it's a dilapidated, old rundown building, we try to go after the owners if we can locate them to correct certain parts of the building. So you, since I've been the attorney, I bet we've had somewhere between fifty to a hundred ordinance violations we've done in the last four years. I could give an accurate number if I looked it up, but probably somewhere in that ballpark. And so that, that particular ordinance we have has been extremely helpful to try to clean up some of these properties. But as far as the square area, to my knowledge, I think we only have one non-occupied building, and it has been inspected, well, and the bank, yeah, it has been inspected also, I know. So there might be two non-occupied buildings.
That's good. I mean, I just, I wouldn't break that up, because I didn't...
And our building inspector's associated with the fire department, he's their chief, their deputy chief, I think, so he looks at it from a fire perspective also. So as to the square, I can tell you that that's being monitored, and as to residential, it's a never-ending process residentially. I've been the attorney here for about four years, and every year, we've seen some of these properties just come right back to us, even if they're new cleanup. And then some of them, we have twenty-five-hundred-dollar fines on them, and they still won't clean up the property. So it's just kinda, it's one of those things that's all I'm doing battle.
Well, my big concern was the downtown building, you guys found it beautiful, we got, I live here now, so we've got it beautiful downtown, and we don't wanna lose it, that's my big concern.
Well, and that's been a big goal for the whole community, I think, not just the town or Ockville, but, you know, I think we're down to, what, two or three buildings that aren't occupied full-time.
Another value, I think you're doing a great job.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for coming. You have?
I'm just with him.
Okay.
I was just here over that. During that call, I talked to the ladies here, and they had a couple of the guys from town come in, and they told me that I should just have more dirt raised up in my yard. I don't wanna do that, because then I'm gonna be flooding out the neighbor's yard to make theirs worse, and I've got a garage right behind me, and I don't really want flooding our garage, so.
Well, Jeff, is there any way you can take a look at that in the next?
Yeah, I know what...
I mean, I can give you my address if I...
I know where it is, because I remember going over there and looking at it this spring, and the two drains you're talking about on those borders, they're kinda, you know, they've been run over by trash trucks.
They're very shallow, and, yeah, the ground's very eroded over there anyway.
And your backyard is pretty much the low spot of the whole neighborhood, right?
And I'm okay with building it up, but I want the drains fixed first, because otherwise I'm just gonna be flooding out everybody else's yards.
Is that down drainage, or?
Yeah, and there's a little bit of question from the guys on where exactly those lines go, so maybe we tried to shoot a hotter thread and try and get a direction on where it's actually feeding from, too.
And I can't speak for everybody else, but if you guys need to dig, you know, put the drain into our yard, I'd be okay with that, as long as it doesn't, like eventually I wanna have privacy, so. And that's another reason I want this fixed, because I, there's no point in putting up a wood fence if they're gonna erode away in ten years, you know? Especially with the cost of lumber right now.
And it rot, you know, it's in that water, and it just...
And metal's just gonna rust, so.
If the trash trucks break them, do they don't have to be picked up?
Or catch them?
I was gonna say, it's pretty hard to free.
I'm gonna be putting up cameras back there also, so if you guys need to...
In the trash trucks, and we have this issue in a few different places too, you know, they'll run in the alleys, and they will, you know, they're big trucks, and they're trying to maneuver, and they'll get off the roadways, and it's just exactly like the place down on Jefferson where it feeds back to Jackson, where Dick Peacock used to live and make that real sharp ninety-degree turn. Well, trash trucks, they have a heart, they can't make it, and they get off into people's yards, and of course, that makes them upset, and trying to go up and down the alleys, well, you know, they can't make that turn.
I was so glad they finally drove that out that alley right there around my house, which it really, really needed it when we moved in.
Yeah.
But, again, I have extra rock in my driveway, if they want to pull some of that over into their alley, they can't, I don't even care, but
No, we just, we need to look at those, those drains.
Is there any timeline, so when do you think you can Probably It'll be this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
This year.
Okay.
How about that? So, so maybe we can get it fixed before the spring rains come.
I agree.
Or at least
I'm dealing with flooding everywhere around my property right now, we just had our garage room for a while, too, so, I mean, I've got a lot of plans that I want to do, but I'm kind of out of steam still, so.
Sure.
And I'm okay if you guys do the ones, you know, build up my driveway to keep it flooding in that direction, I'm good with that, but, or my backyard, I guess, but.
Yeah, we'll take a look down and see what we can do.
I would appreciate it greatly. That's like my biggest concern right here, I, I mean, where I live at, I love, it's just that yard floods so bad that you can't even mow it in, except for every few weeks.
Hey, the guys know that, that place has been like that for years and years and
Well, the lady that, I, the lady that lived there died, but I talked to her son sometimes, and he said that they had a big problem with it, and they'd come to town for meetings, and they kept saying they'd do something, and nothing ever got done, so.
Whole different group.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, again, I'm going issue, just want to try to make sure, because they come down to my mom's house, over the drainage down there, the, the hauler spoke flood there, and the guy that was in here before, I don't know who the chairman is now, but, he had come down there and taken pictures of my mom, my daughter and I standing next to each other, and the hole was deeper than that, and we've lost an eight-foot post, and, like, when I walked by, it looked like a little bit of a rabbit hole, and I looked at it, and I was like, well, that looks kind of weird, so I looked down inside of it, and it was eight-foot deep. And that's over on High Street.
You'll take care of it, won't you, Jeff?
I appreciate it.
So Andy, do you have something?
My daughter would
Just here, sir? Just seeing government in action.
Oh, okay, well, you guys got anything back there?
Everything.
Good. Well, I would undertake no too, a motion to
Send it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.